Good morning to everyone, welcome to Town Hall. I am taking building place today. And I want to start off with a word of prayer. And then we'll stand to do a pledge of allegiance. We pray with the Father and in Jesus' name we thank you for this wonderful day with wonderful weather. We thank you for our Town Hall meeting today. We thank you for our members, we appreciate them so much. We ask that you would reside over the people today. And we ask that you would guide us as good stewards and as members of Trinity Woods. We can there are ways to you, we will not leave on a woman's standing. But in all of our ways, we acknowledge you. Who said we do that, we will never let out that. So thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen. Let us stand for a pledge of allegiance. Alright. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, founded under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will exceeded, I'm gonna ask fine to come up.
Good morning, everyone, how are you? Bonnie Pollitt, Vice President of Green community engagement. And today I'm gonna engage with you. So today is audience participation for Town Hall time, okay? Many for your thoughts. I know I'm scared, so we may have weird thoughts. I don't know. Okay, so, this is how it went in nineteen forty-two. Who has a fun memory that they want to share? Okay, Jan, Jan was born, that's a really good memory actually, that you were born. Anybody else have a great memory that they want to share from nineteen forty-two, Jan? We have, we have nine of them, thank you.
All of the show to Tulsa in nineteen forty-two. And most of them from the, from the, my dad was a student, he was a student.
See, now you're Tulsa, back home. Anyone else have a nineteen forty-two? Don't worry, there's more years to make through. Okay, do you have one? Okay, next group. Nineteen fifty-seven. Any good memories of nineteen, or a memory, I'll take a memory, go ahead, let's try that.
I was really fifty-seven.
What, I'm sixty?
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna burn down, that's just, and.
Oh.
I'm very proud of my, 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 my.
I'm Jerry, I'm a Mary.
Jerry, my wife and I moved in St. Louis in Tulsa in nineteen fifty-seven. They had a little baby girl, but it worked for Central Act Comics. And one of the project that involved in was working on Falcon and God, this one was used on the FAA for the events of South Korea.
Your school does not seem like it, but you really enjoy the Navy, don't you say?
I'm still staying warm.
And that's it.
I'm so scared, but my first prayer is to share another thing with my grandmother, she's basically.
Well, what's good, what town were you in? Lubbock, Texas, okay, we're next, Jerry, oh, do you wanna do this one or the next one, fifty-seven? I remember. Sorry.
I was called to the first priest in my church in Paris, Texas, stay.
I was gonna ask for clarification, Richard, okay. Nineteen sixty-nine, any takers? Oh, wow, damn. Jan.
My third child was born in nineteen sixty-nine. Um, it was gonna be my son, I had two others, and, 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 surprise, personal surprise. He, he being, unfortunately.
Is that T-shirt, yep, that keeps on getting, it's us as well. Anybody else have a nineteen, Sarah? You got married in nineteen sixty-nine, good. Yeah, they're good, nineteen, they graduated, I graduated from college in nineteen sixty-nine. What college?
That was North Central College in Aprilville, Illinois, because we were already wearing. So, that was sort of required, my dad said, we got, let her finish.
So there we go. Jerry, can you see your place for me in nineteen sixty-nine? You guys have good participation today, thank you, this could have been really quiet. Nineteen sixty-nine, the year that, Shepard went to them. Does everybody remember where they were? I don't, but, I, okay.
By nineteen sixty-nine, my wife and I had established a manufacturing company. And one of the things I remember about, we both went walks out of the palace. And we have contract for maybe forty thousand dollar pieces for a holy due caliber rival. To bring, bring, bring them out here, like, most of the right. So this, now, if they grow a pumpkin.
Quite the beautiful life, making things and producing, nothing to get with you, okay. Nineteen seventy-eight, any favorites? Okay.
When John saw you in.
Oh, wow, that, we're four.
Uh, those were the two that you made, and they had a management loan from a client, so you're there here. So that was your two other five years.
Oh, that's good, Charlotte?
Uh, Jan and my daughter was born that year, and we were living in Montana.
Their daughter, not Jan, just, not Jan born that year, with their, I hope they're returning. Just clarify, go ahead, go.
This is, uh, we moved to Tulsa, it's very good for you there, and who are you?
Here's, sorry, who are you?
Forty.
He's thirty-four. Any other nineteen seventy? This could be our last one, I'm gonna stick it on our, it's just. Oh, wait, wait, this is the last one. Nineteen eighty-two. Crystal has a memory, if you say you were born, don't go back there. I don't know. Yay. You say it too?
I was conceived in nineteen eighty-two.
Your, 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 oh, wait, oh, no.
Finished my masters period in nineteen eighty-two.
What was your masters period?
Special review. I will join you, I received my masters and was sort of, of service at that moment.
Okay. Okay, I really will commend all of you for sharing today. And Eric goes, will people participate this, my son, we're gonna find out. So thank you guys so much for participating in my song called Wonderful Morning.
Thank you, Bonnie. Always good to keep having a little fun here, alright, it's great to see everybody. Um, I'm gonna do some recognition as we always do at Town Hall. So we're gonna go in and recognize our April stars of the month. Alright, and is Latasha in here? I haven't seen her today. Okay, so Latasha, okay, so Latasha Grundy is our dining room manager for, um, disciples group. And so she was identified and voted as the star of the month. Just repeating, it was moving and having a positive attitude and a smile on her face as she walked through the building. So we wanna make sure we honor her. Alright, and next, we have Ms. Michelle Beal. And Michelle Beal works in our health center, has a certified medication agent, which helps with it. Primarily in Bueller, and, I know, she's kinda floating around a little bit. Uh, and Michelle is like the energizer bunny, she just keeps going and going and going. Um, the, we said the grass doesn't grow under her feet, so she just does a great job for the residents and the families. Uh, she's a very good coworker, she's been described as a very good coworker. Um, super reliable, very knowledgeable, and just an all-around great team member. And she's actually off work today, so she came in specifically for this, so thank you very much. This says, the star of the month, Michelle Beal, April twenty twenty-five. And Emily Preswell, who's our Vice President in Health Services, says, Michelle's incredibly caring heart and consistently dedicated spirit. Make her an invaluable and cherished member of the Trinity Woods team. The positive feedback we receive from families and residents speaks volumes about her impact. Her willingness to work wherever she is needed, and her view of all the residents is, uh, as her own exemplifies our mission. So, give Michelle Beal a round of applause. Two members for years of service. Uh, we have two that we wanna honor today, first is America, uh, or Erica Long, uh, one of our CNAs in the health center. And I think she's here, right? And then also we wanna honor Rhonda Johnson, and she's not present today either, right? And both of these ladies are celebrating five years with us, and I wanted to mention. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Rhonda's fifteen, America's five years, thank you for verification, you gotta watch. I'm just making sure you all are paying attention, that's really what, that's really what it is. So, um, I did wanna tell you something really cool about America, and some of you may know this, but America was among the first students in our student internship program that we started around five years ago. And she was a student here, did her clinicals here, and then was hired and is still here, happy, happy later. So, we wanna honor both of these ladies today. Okay, we do have some new members with us, and maybe not necessarily do in the last three or four weeks, but we do wanna honor them, and I couldn't remember if I did Katie last month, so if I did, she's gonna get, uh, twice recognition here. So Katie Goodrow moved into Patio Home, and this right here is Riley, we gotta make sure we honor Riley as well. And Katie, are you in here today? Okay, so she's on in here, I've seen her, so, alright. And we also have another member that has moved in, and that's Suzanne Jackson. Suzanne, are you in the, in the house today? Okay, I haven't seen her yet, so, anyway, if you see these ladies around, please make sure, make them feel welcome, introduce yourself, and let's give them a round of applause. Alright, well, I have, uh, several things I wanna discuss or announcements, and now I'll go ahead and take some questions if there are any. The first is, I've been asked to remind you all that today is the member, uh, employee versus member pickleball tournament, or pickleball match. Um, and I wanna recognize Don Newhouse for his hard work on orchestrating that, facilitating that, so I wanna give him some recognition, yes. And others that have been involved as well, so that starts at two PM today, even if you're not playing, uh, it is quite a spectacle to watch. Uh, I'm aware of several people that have been getting, not one, but multiple practice sessions in already this week. Uh, including some members of the executive leadership team, so, um, so please make it a point to go out there, you don't have to stay all day, but go out there and let's support our members and employees in some friendly competition. Um, we have been doing our gathering with Garrett, uh, had two sessions so far, and already received a lot of good questions and feedback and input from you all. So there's one more opportunity for, uh, for our independent and assisted living areas, and that's Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. So if you haven't already attended one of those, uh, you're welcome to do so, and then the next week after that, I'll finish up this round with our health center. So, uh, thank you for participating, it's always been very helpful. Okay, next week is our holy week, of course, and if, uh, I don't know if we published this yet or not, but I did want to just, uh, highlight, it's gonna be an incredible week of speakers, and I wanna make sure that you have it on your radar, um, and on your, on your calendar. I know some of you still, you know, it's a paper calendar, so I'm gonna make sure you pencil this in. Uh, each service is gonna be at ten o'clock every day, and we got, um, some of the services represented, so Andrew Forrest, pastor, okay, yeah. Reverend Paul, no good, I'm gonna include him. Um, Boston Avenue, Sam Powers, Reverend Sam Powers, Tuesday, yeah, yeah. Ian, our very own doctor of math. His son, Alex Maya, is the new pastor of that town. Uh, he's a good, your son, stay, should be there. And Reverend Stacey Springle, our very own, we start, will be here also from Pastor Research on Thursday. And then, to say the best of us. I think Reverend Jerome Stilley, CFO Trinity Woods, will be preaching on Friday, alright. On Good Friday. Bringing good world on Good Friday, so it's gonna be a great week, I'm looking forward to celebrating these people, you know. Before and after yourselves, though, I'm there. These are, are these, are they all in the police center? Okay, there you go, thank you, okay. I have one other announcement, and I'm making this announcement on the House of God. Um, next month, he will give, uh, financial update, may, uh, period, he must provide his records to the law. But I did want to update you on the whole retention credit, this is DRC that we talked about, uh, for a long time. And, uh, if you are new here, the DRC is, um, I, I look at it really as a reimbursement credit for businesses, companies that uh, experienced some challenges with their labor force during pandemic. And this is a federal program that was offered, that you had to apply to, and go through a series of application, uh, processes, and then you were either approved or denied. And we applied for three different quarters that we met the eligibility criteria for twenty twenty-one, and, uh, were approved. And we had been waiting all of this time for that move to, we had lots of people helping us to, you know, get in touch with the right people, to complete those application processes and things like that. We believe that we're eligible for about three hundred and eighty million dollars reimbursement for that, um, for the added expenses and things that we had with our labor force during that time. And I'm happy to announce, while we, while he does not have a check in hand, we have been informed that our, we're, we're gonna have three, three different checks. It's gonna come in three different checks, and our first one will be here on the fifteenth of May, which is next week, so. For those of you who've been following our, uh, uh, paying attention to the finances and following the finances, this will, uh, be a blessing to us to just help us replenish cash, and then get us into the, of the cash position. So probably that first check will be around one, two, three, four, so, uh, next month, that, um, we confirm that before. Alright, before we bring Bonnie up, we're gonna do a referral, you know, we'll take a couple of questions, we've got some time. So, anybody have one for me? We don't, uh, Richard's question is over what period of time will the other two checks come in, we don't actually know that yet. Um, we don't have any indication that believe it's gonna be over months and months. So hopefully in May, Jerome will have the report for you all then. I'm hoping, you know, many consecutive months, something like that, and will be fully reimbursed by, you know, two, three months. What else? Yes, Stella? Yes, uh, her question, when the new gate opens, will we still have security guards roaming? And the answer to that is yes, we will still have twenty-four hour security, as far as their schedules and, and the cadence and workflows. All of that gets determined, yes, we will still have some for our security, and they will be roaming, yes.
Reverend Michelle, she's a dead swan, is still there.
I feel like there's an Easter resurrection joke.
I have that scheduled for today, to swap the swans.
So the dead won't still in there, you didn't get that? All, all the dead will take that one when he comes up. I didn't mean to get in there. Dead swans, maybe that's under my job description, it's harder to do, he says it's hard, I think that's right. Okay, Sharon has a question, right back here, oh, Richard.
Jerry, what, what did you expect? Guy in plain, well, you'd be watching when they came in.
Yeah, this is gonna get, you guys need to update on that, but when we started it a couple of weeks ago, we were estimating about a hundred and sixty days to completion. So, that puts us, I think, around in summer and August timeframe. Oh, yes. Yep. Yep, that's on Dennis's list, yes, very good, thank you for the reminder. Okay, is there one more? Okay, okay, you wanna do the referral, John, you? Right, thank you all.
You're so pretty.
My microphone just stopped working all.
My mom wakes up, even I ask questions, like, you're so pretty. So this month, we had, this month, actually people turn in friends that we did contact, so. If you like, see. And then also with my reports, uh, if you have a friend, please refer them, Christine Anne, we love, um, we love, love these. Uh, because she knows our best resource. Additionally, in one of the gatherings with Garrett, I was asked, and I've been asked a couple of times, to provide some availability, because you guys have friends that are interested in people living here, so um, at the front of the room is, uh, current availability, if you have people you wanna pass that out to, which you have availability. Um, so there's, so, 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 thank you for helping us, I'm still repaying. Any questions for me?
Please.
Vice President, it's your best resources, and it hurt, I haven't given a recording a lot, so I'm gonna give you guys a little bit of a stat baby in, um, update real quick. So on the left, here is your single graph, that is our turnover report. And so, um, obviously, turnover is not always a good thing, you know, people leave the organization, so we track that and monitor it. And, um, this graph shows the last eight quarters, and I can tell you that, that all of it kind of goes up and down. On average, we are fairly close to the leading page, uh, national data that gives us a benchmark. Uh, for twenty twenty-four, the benchmark was about eighty-three percent, or, no, sorry, forty-three percent turnover, and we were at forty-four point five. So just a little bit higher in the turnover benchmark for twenty twenty-four, so fairly close. Couple other statistics that we watch regularly is vacancy rate, which that's in our open positions that we have, that we're actively recruiting for. Um, right now we have six point five three percent that is open. Um, there's a couple of positions that we have that are some of our mid hire, part of the field, um, very unique, specialized positions. Did find out this week, we have interviews on all those schedules, so hopefully we'll get those filled, and that, that'll go back down a little bit. But we are still far below the industry average, about thirteen point two percent base, so about half, um, the national average there, so that's really good. Another, uh, important statistic we look is retention rate, so how many people are staying with the organization, uh, here over here. And so for twenty twenty-four, our retention rate was sixty-eight point eight percent. And, um, the average for our area, I think with my region, is about fifty-seven percent retention. So we are well above the industry average, we're making things. Another thing that I like to keep track of is, um, the week here connect survey data on employee satisfaction. So, um, on the operations side, you guys do a lot of resident satisfaction, which we track, but I also track, uh, employee satisfaction on a ongoing basis. And there's probably about, I don't know, twenty-five metrics we could look at. Uh, so I have to kinda narrow it down, really kinda see which ones do we wanna focus on. So I have three here, and it's organizational culture, highly satisfied, and then the satisfaction, satisfaction index. Um, the organizational culture is how do employees view the organization's culture as a whole? Do they enjoy being here, would they refer other people to live or work here or get services here? And currently our, um, our data is sitting at ninety-one percent, which is above the benchmark of being, so very healthy, um, good stat there. The highly satisfied staff is when people complete their survey, if they answer on a scale of one to five, if they answer a four or a five, that's considered that they're highly satisfied. Um, so this index shows us, you know, who, who of the percentage is, is in that four to five range, which we want people to be. Well, currently sitting at twenty-nine percent, which is slightly behind the, um, industry benchmark of thirty-two. So a little bit behind, and, and this data, I guess, version covers the last six months. So we're specifically looking in that timeframe, I think I reported in October last year, so what has happened in the last six months? And the satisfaction index is, how old do they like their job, how old is it meet their expectations? Uh, and how I, um, how are they likely to stay, um, with the organization? And right now we're sitting at score seventy-three, which is above the benchmark. So, all in all, employee satisfaction looks really well. Um, we do a, a good job and, and work really hard and addressing issues as quick as we can, and we get that on survey. So we're meeting with employees regularly, finding out where we need to tweak things. Um, in the last six months, we've also had a lot of, uh, training and development for our leaders. So hopefully, you know, new power and, and the leader gets better, organizations can get better as, as a whole too, so. Been working on that pretty actively, but all in all, I think, for our turnover, keeping employees, we're doing a really good job. I think in the health center, um, if you were to ask me that about a year ago, we were in a different situation, and I think now we only have about three employees, so. Um, kudos to my HR team that, um, has done a really good job telling physicians, so. Um, any questions that you have? I just wanna say, when I talk about employee satisfaction, a lot of times it's on the, it's on the supervisor and the role that they play. But I, I, I can not, not mention the role that the residents play, the members of the organization play in employee satisfaction. The, the, the top item that they say in their satisfaction in working here is serving the people. So, thank you for welcoming new people as they come in, um, they feel like they're part of your family, and that helps us retain certain rights, so, so, thank you. Yeah, Sharon. Stay. Sounds sad, so, so this, this data actually encompasses everyone. So this is the last, uh, this is the last six months, and this is everyone's surveys. So what it's gonna include in this last six months is, if, if we didn't hire anyone in that particular area in the last six months, we're not gonna be included, because they weren't sent a survey. So this does include every new employee, they get, they get surveyed multiple times within their first year, so that's what's data expected. So that's what's data expensive. If you take this data and expand it, look over an entire year, it's almost exactly the same too. Now, we actually do track both of those numbers, so we look at voluntary versus involuntary resignation. We look at both. Um, our involuntary resignation, um, you know, it's just part of the job. Our volunteer is actually really low, so the ones that we can't control, that we need, is actually pretty low. Um, all in all, I don't usually throw on that, I don't focus on it too much, because retention costs the organization money. So it doesn't matter why they need, whether we ask them to shine brightly elsewhere, or they decide to shine brightly elsewhere. Um, all in all, it does so cost the organization money. So we wanna constantly drive that number down, keep a good person, retain the right person, um, so that it's lower expenses. So we, we do, um, it's, it's a, uh, percentage.
Percentage, okay.
Yeah, uh, we look at it by quarter, so we don't track retention, or we don't track turnover every month. We look at it on a quarter basis, so this is the last eight quarters. So it kind of goes up and down based on, on the quarters, yeah.
Um, what kind of, uh, retirement plan can we provide to employees? Next question. Is that a fire, do they continue to retire with funding?
Yeah, uh, that's a great question. We offer really good retirement benefits. Um, we have a four O three B that we can participate in, because we're nonprofit. Employees can elect to do after-tax, oh, for tax contributions. Um, they can choose what percentage they wanna participate, they're not required to participate. And then the organization does provide a match after they have been here for a year. Um, they are fully vested at one year. So once they are eligible to start receiving the match, they are fully vested. So if they do leave the organization, they stay on that, so. Thanks, guys. Not sure what's happening here. Dennis has brought out the swans.
I do. Thank you, the people complaining, getting one that is complaining to have a bullet in it. Um, out of the pond, the new ones arrived. So the new ones arrived, and I'm pretty sure that the, um, the one that's having a struggle will be removed today. The two new ones will be putting, so, there we go. Well, that's too, so if I don't cover it all, please remind me after we leave. Paddy, home roads, we're good much, um, pretty much got this all of that, we made it, we got it out. Many people sent work down, we've got about two percent left. Most of that is just going back to cleaning up the landscape, cleaning up the slog, um, and then, um, comes this island, we've got some, it's running, you know, we've got eight minutes of time down the scene, so. How your home world project will be. Fascination, John, be careful what you ask, well, once you get it, it's very, so, I don't know, it's very scary, so. Last, a couple of things, uh, that, that interview on the new entry project, uh, we will see with the old Higgin, or a lot of gear, uh, with a lot of work has to be done to make it now. This is starting foundation and construction of the garage that. And I'm hoping that will be done soon. Thank you so much. Just offering to those who go in next. Stop that, it's awesome. Point is, if you guys see anyone that, if you go in there after this staff, please let us know. Um, let us know. If you have, if you have, yeah, people who enter that area, you know, obviously, don't think. Please don't, okay. We do that, uh, cameras anything, can't see, so. If you guys didn't report to us, you can see it in time for anyone when that happened. You, um, So I think that's, uh, you know, to overcome something.
Yeah, a question after the, the roads finished down, what about the, uh, the asphalt, the potholes and that?
It's a great question, Gary. Um, we, we recognize they're there, now that all the big trucks have come and gone, we're gonna be going back and rebuilding them all. Next year, we're gonna do an overlay on all of our asphalt, in front of Crestwood, and behind those fat lumps. I don't know, it's more like we'll be on the Capitol, but this year. This year, we're just gonna pass the holes, the overlay, after.
Then, yes. When will the cones on Thirty Second Street be removed? Does that then remove them back and?
Um, I have to check on that, Tom, I'm not sure. Uh, I'm not sure why they're there, though. So I'll check it out. Ty's back there, he, he heard you coming, so, oh, I'll absolutely check with him on that. We'll get those ready.
Tornation of the ones that are just on the stand, like right here at the stop sign.
Yep. My daddy. Yep, my daddy. Okay. Good. So.
Can you repeat that question?
Yes. One little landscape you can do. And I'm assuming you're talking about around the pavement and, uh, uh, road problem. Um, so I just have to add a little bit to that. Sure, everyone has got a message. On Wednesday, uh, Landmark's landscape crew had, um, their colleagues who saw many different trouble. That's a fire, it'd be, it's a, probably about fifteen minutes. It, it passed away. So, um, he was twenty-five years old, um, as a two-year-old. And I asked Landmark, told Landmark to, uh, they were working on exactly what you're requesting and asking about. Asked them to do life services until Monday, and just wanted them to actually say. So after, uh, we will start back on Monday, they made a lot of progress in talking, dressing Pittsburgh Place, Pittsburgh Ford. So after Monday, they'll start back on then. Um, I don't have an exact date of completion, but I know next week will give services. Yes. I would guess we're probably, we probably have two. Any other questions? Mm-hmm. All right, thank you very much. I'll leave those swans there for you guys to enjoy.
So, you're, uh, I've never been to a Grace again. And I haven't known, you know, you would have been, uh, I've had the chance to meet at our waffle Saturday, can anybody? Do you enjoy it? It's wonderful, and I don't know, um, we gather in Fleming, and Tuesday, it's seven tonight. And we, um, gather to visit fellowship and enjoy the special waffles that Victoria Prior provides for our visits. And she does this, she thought Saturday, she was gonna be on her own, but she got involved, figure out. And, um, those of you who have not joined, would be glad for it. Is Victoria in here? By chance, we want to give her a great big yell. Thank you, and also, remember helpers that do y'all.
And I read, has some final remarks. Thank you, Natasha. There's a lot going on this month. And, uh, you have to read those on your calendar and your supplement, know it all. So I wanted to pull out just a few things to be sure you don't miss them. First of all, the treasure chest will be open next Friday. And this part is not in the calendar. They will be featuring a five-one-get-one-three-two. And we're also auctioning a Rocker Retainer. So from soup to nuts, your treasure chest. Now, two, um, upcoming events that I wanna be sure you go back and circle on your calendars. Neither of them require reservations. But first is on a Saturday. And I know often the opening of Saturday events, so please don't, on April twenty-sixth. At one P M., we will be entertained by a brass intent from the Tulsa Symphony Orchestra. We are so fortunate to have these up close and personal opportunities to hear the top professional musicians in Tulsa play just for us. So don't miss that, and bring a family member or a friend. Especially if you know somebody who's in a school band or orchestra, this is a great opportunity for them. That is Saturday, April twenty-sixth. And lastly, on Wednesday, April thirtieth, at two P M. in Fleming Center, your recycling team is bringing you a wonderful program called Recycling What, Where, and Why. Joe Scott, Territory Sales Manager for American Waste Control, which is the company that annually recycling on our campus, will give us the latest information and guidance to help us care for our earth. And after all, April twenty-second is Earth Day. He will help us make sense of all those recycling samples. And know what we can and cannot recycle here, as well as updating us on what happens after our recycling use our campus. And there will be twenty questions, and I'll just want to bring samples. It will be a very informative time, so be sure, Wednesday, April thirtieth, two P M. in Fleming Center. And now I believe Charlotte Frazier has an announcement. There she is.
Uh, some of you may need to add another date on your calendar. Uh, I have learned recently that if you don't have a real idea, uh, that you need to get into the tag agency or the place where they make that happen by May seventh. After May seventh, according to what the article says, you will not be able to get on any domestic airline, uh, trips that you wanna take. And, uh, you will not be able to go into any federal buildings without or without a current passport for it. So, um, you need to check your driver's license out if you're using it, and make sure you had it, uh, up today for that occasion, so you can continue those wonderful trips. Thank you very much, Charlotte. And here endeth our meeting, so go with God.